Okay, and it's 7:00 PM. Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the with the Open Public Meetings Act. An announcement of the annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger on December 4th and to the Home News Tribune on December 4th, 2019. I believe that was on December 4th, 2020. Anyway, the notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on December 11th, 2020, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South 5th Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on December 11th, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Josh, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Beryl Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han. Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovair.
Here.
This is our 16th virtual council meeting. A recording of the proceedings will be made available via HPTV following the meeting. Are there any questions from council members on the agenda?
No, mayor.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to mention I had a resolution on here that I need to pull when we get to consent on number 14D regarding the contract with Xtel. We're just ironing out some of the details. That's for our new phone system. And I just, it's going to wait till next year. So I apologize for interrupting the flow, but I didn't want to forget to mention that.
All right, hold on. I just want to make sure that we make notice.
So if we could just table 14D.
Well, we'll need a motion to table it, so I will ask.
They'll move.
Well, let's wait till we get to that. Thank you. Okay. We have some proclamations this evening. And before I read the proclamation for Reverend Dr. Alfred Johnson, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Foster to say a few words about the Reverend Doctor. Councilwoman?
Thank you, mayor. Reverend Dr. Alfred Johnson was an extraordinary individual that gave tirelessly and selflessly. He was the first Black minister to ever serve on the continent of Africa. He started his service in Africa as a first missionary to the Congo in 1969. From then, he went on to not only serve as the first Black missionary to Africa, but he started many, many organizations, including, but not limited to, the Jamaican Organization of New Jersey, the organization of African-American leaders and community advisors. That was based in Washington. He commissioned many activities for feeding the poor. Operation Seed in Newark, where he had a ministry in Newark, and he started a food service program there where he feed approximately 1,000 people per week. He also served on many political campaigns and committees, and he was an overall dedicated servant to the cause of lifting up the cause of African-Americans in our community and finding great and creative ways to honor, to treat us with dignity and respect. And that's just a scratch of what Reverend Alfred Johnson did for all of us. On many campaigns, he could be found in here in Highland Park and in Newark, making sure that votes were being cast, people were engaged, and that the voices of the community, that was being, make sure it was heard, and that people had a voice, and he was always the constant advocate. He passed away last Monday, and he surely will be missed.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And now the proclamation. Whereas Reverend Dr. Alfred Johnson, also known as the Village Pastor, departed this life on Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. And whereas Reverend Dr. Alfred B. Johnson was pastor at Clinton Avenue Presbyterian Church in Newark, New Jersey, for 21 years before retiring in 2010. Whereas Reverend Dr. Alfred Johnson, prior to his service in Newark, worked various ministries over the course of 54 years in Turks and Caicos Islands, Democratic Republic of Congo, Nigeria, and pastored congregations in England, Jamaica, and New York. Whereas Reverend Dr. Alfred Johnson was the founder of the Jamaican Organization of New Jersey. And whereas Reverend Dr. Alfred Johnson has received numerous citations and awards in recognition of his broad contribution to society, including Outstanding Public Service Award from the Caribbean Medical Mission, Certificate of Recognition from the South African Leadership Development Program on South African Freedom Day, the Volunteerism Recognition Award from the Associates in Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities, and the Jamaican Council General's Heritage Award for Community Service. And whereas Reverend Dr. Alfred B. Johnson had a deep and strong commitment to his homeland, Kingston, Jamaica. And whereas Reverend Dr. Alfred B. Johnson was a devoted family man to his wife Abigail and sons Andre, Alistair, Alwyn, and his two grandsons. Now, therefore, in recognition of his exemplary life serving his nation, community, university, profession, and family, I, Gail Beryl Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim Reverend Dr. Alfred B. Johnson posthumously as a distinguished gentleman, a distinguished citizen. Thank you. I am privileged and honored to have known him in my life. Elsie, you'll make sure that his family gets a copy of this. This, yes?
Yes, I will. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And I have a very uplifting proclamation in honor of a family in Highland Park. I'd like to read off to you now. Whereas Highland Park's trees play an important role in the borough's environmental health and sustainability overall. And whereas Highland Park's trees help conserve energy and filter and cleanse our water. And whereas Highland Park's trees add value to homes and properties around town and reduce noise pollution by absorbing sounds. And whereas Highland Park Shade Tree Advisory Committee has mapped out an ambitious five-year plan to replenish the borough's declining street tree population. And whereas it would be challenging to meet these tree planting goals without community support. And whereas Highland Park resident Paul Ehrlich has very generously donated $20,000 in memory of his father, Solomon Ehrlich, to the Tree Replacement Fund for the purposes of planting new trees and caring for existing trees. And whereas the Borough of Highland Park, in consultation with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, will put this generous donation to good use by caring for and enhancing the borough's tree category and our canopy. Now, therefore, I, Gail Beryl Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim the Ehrlich family a Highland Park champion of trees. Thank you very, very much to the Ehrlich family. We here in Highland Park, as a tree community, value our trees. They add so much beauty to our lives every single day. Again, big thank you to the Ehrlich family. All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular work sessions held September 15th, 2020, October 6th, 2020, October 20th, 2020, November 10th, 2020, and December 1st, 2020, as distributed?
So. Madam Mayor, I was marked absent on October 6th, and I wasn't. And so if we could amend those minutes.
Okay, so then may I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended on October 6th to include Councilman Hale in attendance?
They'll move.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Council reports. I'm going to start with Tara, you're first on my screen this time.
I have no report, but I would like to wish all of our residents happy holidays for whatever holidays that they do celebrate this month. And I'd also like to point out that today is the 229th anniversary of when the Bill of Rights were ratified. And I'm very happy to work in a town on a council where we take people's freedoms and rights into consideration whenever we make any of our decisions. And since Stephanie's not here, I'd like to point out it's also National Cupcake Day.
Thank you for that, Tara. And I think we should all have a cupcake after this meeting.
I agree.
Okay, Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
I do, Madam Mayor. So this Friday, December 18th, is the last farmer's market of the season. So strap on your snowshoes and head over to the farmer's market for the last farmer's market of the season. It's been not an easy season to pull off a farmer's market, and Main Street has done a remarkable job in making it happen in the first place, but then making it thrive as well. So I wanted to make sure. The last one is this Friday. I also wanted to thank the 25 or so local businesses who joined me along with the mayor and Commissioner Kenneth Armwood and the county economic development team for a special briefing about Middlesex County-based small grant programs, grant programs for small businesses. It was a great turnout. We got a lot of great information about how small businesses in the Middlesex County are eligible for these grants of up to $30,000. There's a lot of information on the county website. Also, we have some as well for those who weren't able to attend. And I particularly wanted to thank Commissioner Armwood for making it happen and his team. It was, I think, a very successful meeting. I also wanted to, again, ask everyone to shop local this holiday season for everything that you possibly can. I also wanted to say that if, as you are shopping local, if you hold up your camera and shoot a 15-second video and post it on Facebook for wherever you're shopping, that type of word-of-mouth advertising is fantastic for the local businesses. So it's just saying, I'm at, fill in the blank, I'm getting, this is a great shop. That's all you have to do. It's a great way of helping local businesses in addition to shopping in them, helping them with advertising. This is a tough time for them. So it's, I'm hoping that that might be something we can get started. Lastly, as we heard before, I wanted to tell everyone or everyone who is currently celebrating Hanukkah and soon to be celebrating Christmas or Kwanzaa, please hope that you have a happy and healthy and safe holiday season. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, mayor. There's two things that I'm going to talk about tonight. One is that we hired a new police officer, Shakila Brown, and she will be starting tomorrow. So I'm very happy. She was an excellent candidate, and I'm very happy that we have a new officer that will be starting with us. And I think she's going to do a wonderful job. She interviewed well, and she's going to be a real asset for Highland Park. On the issue of Police Department, on tonight's agenda, we have on there that we have hired Rutgers University to do our data analysis. This is something that the community was adamant about, that we did not use our internal folks in the Police Department to do any kind of analysis. They wanted, was to be done by an independent body. We reached out to a number of folks, and based on the information that we needed and that we wanted, based on the feedback we received from our community, Rutgers was right next door. Not only were they right next door, but they were able to assess our needs the way that the criteria that we wanted from the voices that we heard from our residents, and that criteria is going to be looked at. We were receiving these quarterly reports. We'll have access to data at all times. So should there be a question or should there be a concern, we'll have the information as it pertains to stops and what have you, all that information. So that will be phase one that they'll be starting. And I just wanted to share a little bit ahead of schedule about what phase one is. They're going to be doing an inventory of the police CAD system. They're going to be doing a data aggregation. They're also going to be looking at different elements of the data and to do uniformity and completeness in reporting. The analysis will be done frequently. And I want to say that we are not the only town that have tapped into them. We started and other towns now have hopped onto that bandwagon. So that will be done and open for any questions that anyone may have, but that's what we're looking for. I'm happy to say that before the end of the year, what was a hard request from many of our residents that we were able to put this together and to get this data out. And we will be looking at hiring Rutgers to come in and to take a look at our numbers and to improve our PD, improve and create much more transparency in our PD. So I'm really happy about this, and I'm looking forward to seeing the numbers as they become, they become available to us. And the other note is that tomorrow, we're expecting a major snowstorm. And with that being said, that ordinances that we have on the books are going to be in place. So please avoid parking in certain areas, and snow has to be removed right after snow falls. So we're going to put our ordinance on the website so you can see it. And please do your best to follow the rules. And so you won't block people. People will have access into businesses, which is most important. As you heard, Councilmember Hale said that we need to support our downtown business, so we need not to block the accessways so people can come in and shop in our local stores in our downtown. And most importantly, we don't have to give out any kind of tickets. This is not the season, this is not the time we want to do that. But we also need for you to make sure that people who want to shop in our downtown, they have easy access. So remove the snow after the snow has completely fallen. With that said, I too want to wish everyone happy Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, and Christmas. Most importantly, in all your events and whatever you're going to be doing, please wear your mask. We need to do our best to hold down on the spread of COVID. So if you are celebrating with families, please wear your mask and please be safe. It is very, very serious that we all take this thing very seriously. With that said, thank you very much, and good night until next year.
Thank you. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I will soon be completing my second three-year term as an elected member of this governing body. I've enjoyed being on the council and trying to enhance the quality of life of our residents for the past six years. I want to thank the people of Highland Park for giving me the opportunity to serve our borough as a council member and the Highland Park Democratic Municipal Committee for nominating me as a candidate for council in 2014 and 2017. I want to thank our Borough Administrator, Terry Hovair, who has worked diligently to put the borough on good footing, and our Borough Clerk, Joan Hollings, and Deputy Borough Clerk Jennifer Santiago for all the work they do for Highland Park residents, including helping provide important information on a regular basis to the council. I want to thank all the department heads and all the borough staff for all they do. I hope you all know how appreciated you are. As former council member Nate Segal, of Blessed Memory, once told me, "Imagine how high our taxes would be without our volunteers." So all the volunteers that I've worked with on boards, commissions, and committees over these past six years, my heartfelt thanks for the great amount of time and effort you have put into making Highland Park a better place to live. I also want to thank all my colleagues with whom I've served on council over the past six years. Councilman John Erickson and Councilwoman Susan Welkowitz, both of Blessed Memory. Councilman Gary Potts, Councilman Jim Walsh, and Councilman Matt Hirsch. For my current colleagues, I want to thank Councilwoman Stephanie Kim Cho Han for bringing a millennial vision to the council and Councilman Matt Hale for moving economic development forward in Highland Park. The people of Highland Park are extremely lucky to have both of them working on their behalf. I want to thank Councilwoman Tara Canavera, who has only served the borough as a member of the council for a few months, but has already made a meaningful impact on the council and will hopefully continue to serve the borough for a long time. For all six years on council, I've served with three amazing public servants who all live and breathe Highland Park and are fighting for all of our residents on a daily basis. Council President Phil George, who helps the entire council with his tremendous knowledge of municipal government and his no-nonsense attitude and his commitment to fairness. Councilwoman Elsie Foster, who has served our borough admirably for 20 years for her wisdom, sage advice, commitment to equity, institutional knowledge, and always being willing to say what needs to be said. Finally, I want to thank Mayor Gail Beryl Mittler, who truly works to her job with the best interests of Highland Park in mind and continues to bring her vision for a vibrant downtown closer and closer to reality. In closing, I apologize to anyone that I may have offended. I know I've made mistakes, and I hope that I have made some worthwhile contributions to our borough during my time on council. I wish all Highland Park residents happy holidays.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
I do, mayor, thank you. I want to address Councilman Fine on the backside of the coin he has just spoken to. In six years, I have never called Josh and received a "I can't do it" or "I'm too busy." In six years, I have had more stimulating conversations and more debates and more discussions about what Highland Park needs to be and where it is going than with Josh. We had a tradition, we didn't always keep, but we tried, of touching base on Thursday mornings by phone to discuss whatever it was. I never picked up the phone and never got a call back within 12, over 12 hours later, about some issue that I would ask him to communicate about, to talk to his volunteers, to talk to someone. And we disagreed a lot. We had some problems with some issues. We had some debates and discussions, some of which, as Josh knows, went on for almost a year. But I have to say, on the backside of Josh's coin, that they were actually pleasurable. There was never discourtesy. There was never insult. And that was not only to me, or to the mayor, or to council, but to our residents. We always respected, first and foremost, the needs, desires, the wants of our residents, the requirements of our ordinances and state law, and how all of those could work together to move us forward. I enjoyed every minute of it. I genuinely respect him. I genuinely enjoyed our conversations. I genuinely will miss you on council. And all I can say, Josh, is I wish you the absolute best. You had a great training here for whatever you need to go forward in how to work with people. And I think that the residents of Highland Park owe you a great debt for bringing what you brought across the spectrum to our borough. That be, and you have my personal thank you for everything. The big issue tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is the snowstorm which is approaching us rapidly. It is predicted that we are under, the latest models and touching base with our superintendent at DPW, who is monitoring the state channels with regard to warning our municipalities to be ready that we are in a very heavy band of fast-falling, very heavy snow. They call it a heart attack maker and a lot of things. It's supposed to be very wet and heavy, so please be careful. We will start brining the roads tomorrow morning. That's the white stripes you see going up and down the road. And brining is not to melt the snow, it's to make it not freeze, which is a concern with this heavy wet snow. We will be having the plows get out as soon as the snow starts and hits two inches. They will be running tomorrow. First priority is to our main arteries for safety access. A lot of people have asked, though, what about our, you know, the safe walking streets? What about the borough dining areas on North 4th and South 3rd? They will be done, but only after the streets are accessible and passable. We will have crews there clearing the tables and clearing the area as a second priority. But we will be working on the streets first. We will be starting very early. I would like to also wish you thanks on behalf of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, the Native Plant Sanctuary in the Meadows Trail, all of our volunteers, the ones who dig the dirt, plant the trees, tend the trees, on behalf of the very generous grant of the Ehrlich family, which it just, it is one of those quiet things that contributes so much to Highland Park, which is the very passive but very vibrant canopy over our town and the native plantings that we're trying to move forward. And on behalf of all those groups, I say thank you. Finally, this is just a detail, mayor, but this is the only chance to mention it. We have a Public Works Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday morning. I'm going to request that that be moved, simply because we generally tell the public about what meetings we're having, but we're anticipating that I will be riding with crews for the plowing to determine how it goes, along with the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee and our public streets and public quiet areas. So we won't be able to have that meeting. Going to ask that it be moved till next week. And with that, thank you, everyone. Best wishes for the holidays, for the solstice, for the fifth day of Hanukkah, for Kwanzaa, and for the holidays. God bless you all, and may you be safe, and God bless America.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just a couple items, minor, not minor, I should say. I just wanted to thank Josh for his kind words and to wish him well. And I have a feeling we'll still see you around and we'll still be working together in various capacities, and I do look forward to that. in various capacities, and I do look forward to that. I wanted to build off of what Council President Phil George just mentioned regarding the snow. One thing I wasn't able to catch up with him on today was after discussing it with our superintendent. If the snow is as bad as we anticipate, we are going to have to cancel Thursday's South Side Recycling because the guys are going to be up all night plowing. We're going to be trying to clean everything up, and it's just going to be a little too much to do both. That said, if for some reason the snowstorm's a bust and it just rains all night, put your buckets out. But essentially, if there's snow of consequence, which I would define loosely as between four and five inches, keep those buckets in, save yourself the trip. Keep them out of the roadways, allow those trucks to get through. So, just wanted to make sure, and we'll be sending a nixle out tomorrow to that effect as well. And I just wanted to remind everyone that the Borough Hall is still closed except for by kind of appointment only. And we are on a staggered schedule here, so we are reducing the number of employees in the building at a given time, just taking, you know, as many precautions as we can to keep the workplace safe and to keep the public safe. So, make sure if you're coming in, if you have business you want to do, give a call to the department in question in advance to make sure someone's there to help you out. I hate leaving people hanging out front without someone there to assist them. And then lastly, if we do have, if the snow is really crazy and my son's out sledding all day, we will potentially have to close the building to staff just to kind of avoid hazards and getting into the office. However, thanks to COVID, probably the only time you ever hear me say that, we have established remote work capabilities. So, we should be able to maintain most services that don't involve in person to our best abilities if we are in fact closed on Thursday due to snow. That's all I've got, Mayor. And Happy New Year, everybody. You won't be seeing me for two weeks.
Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilwoman Foster, are you raising your hand?
Yes, 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 I am. I neglected to, I neglected to inform everyone that this coming Thursday would have been our Community Police Forum that has been postponed until next year and that our police department is, has put together the entire schedule, the quarterly schedule for next year. So, that will be posted shortly on not only our Facebook page, but on the police department website and on the borough website about each forum that we will be having next year. Along with that, that our police department has continued to work hard. And during this COVID season, they are also working a staggered shift. So, they are working a staggered shift to make sure that they keep everyone safe. Luckily, no one in our police department has had COVID. So, we just want our residents to be safe and we got to do our best to hold on on the COVID cases and not to have the community spread that we've seen. Middlesex County had an uptick in that. So, please, everyone, do your best to make sure that you don't get sick. And that's the only thing I needed was to mention. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few things in my report for you tonight. First, I'm pleased to announce that despite the pandemic, one of our prized programs, the annual Park Partners Grant Program, will continue this year. Under the Park Partners Grant Program, the borough invites applications, holds a public review and voting session, and then provides up to $2,000 each to help execute five winning projects. The number of residents participating in this vote has grown to over 400 last year. Project applications must be in one of the following categories: the environment, arts, culture and diversity, safety, or universal access and health and wellness. In this year's competitions, we're particularly interested in seeing applications for activities or practices that are COVID-19 safe, that means virtually and/or with outdoor virtual social distance. The winning application in each category will be decided in an online applicant exhibition and voting session, which will be held in February of 2021. Only borough residents are eligible to participate in the voting session. Residents who are interested in obtaining a grant are asked to complete an application available on our website and submit it to Harry Glazer, our Public Information Officer, by email at hglazer@hpborough.com, no later than Monday, January 18th at 1:00 p.m. For more information, please email Harry again at hglazer@hpborough.com. Secondly, I'm very encouraged to see the introduction of the coronavirus vaccine and the initial stage of inoculation for healthcare workers in major hospitals in our state, including Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital in New Brunswick. A number of residents have asked me about when the vaccine will be available to the general public. Will it be covered by medical insurance? What side effects it might have and other thoughtful questions? As you may know, the current supply of vaccines is limited and healthcare workers and residents of long-term care residences are being given preference in receiving it. Excuse me. According to the Wall Street Journal, while there is not yet an established schedule for when the vaccine will be available to the rest of the population, it's estimated that the first dose of the vaccine will be available to the general public in the late spring or early summer. I recommend that everyone interested in learning more about the vaccine visit the CDC website, which addresses many of these questions. that's V-A-C-C-I-N-E-S, forward slash eight dash things that dot html. And that will be on our website as well. I'm so proud, finally, I am so proud of our young Highland Park athletes and sports teams. Our HP Rec Department's 12-and-under Boys Baseball Team, led by coaches Sean Blumberg and Rob Kaplan Sherman and manager Jeremy Renna, finished their fall season with a strong 11 wins, five losses, and one forfeit record. And the 10-and-under Boys Baseball Team, newly formed in 2020 and led by coaches Benji Loxpizer and Rob Kaplan Sherman and manager Ari Loxpizer, had a stellar season, starting with a 14-0 no-hitter victory and concluding with the 13-0 record. They won the league championship in two hard-fought games, winning 10-3 and 10-4 victories against strong opposing teams from other municipalities. And our winning just keeps going on. Congratulations to coach Tim Stark, a Highland Park High School alumni, and to the Highland Park High School's Boys Cross Country Team. They are the Group One Central 2020 Champions. This is the team's first title win since 1968. Seniors Ben Gaudish came in first and Angelo Boteon, second. Junior Liam Tilton, third. And sophomore Jason Lynn, fourth, claimed the top four spots in a muddy field of 83, with Lynn finishing a full 17 seconds before the fifth-place runner. Way to go, Highland Park! Lastly, tonight, as Councilman Josh Fine told us all, is his last council meeting. I want to publicly thank you, Josh, for all the service you provided over these last six years to all Highland Park residents. You really care about our community. Josh, just so everyone knows, served on our Health and Human Services Committee as chair at one time and our Recreation and Arts Committees, which, I don't know, Josh, what does that include? Seven or eight different volunteer boards and our rec department here? He most recently worked very closely with me as the finance chair and helped guide our decisions to keep our taxes as reasonable as we possibly can. So, Josh, you've been a really devoted council member. You care a lot about our community, though you and I may not have agreed on everything. We certainly knew how to work and move things forward. So, I appreciate you and all that you have done for me and for Highland Park. Thank you again. The last thing I want to say is Councilman Hale and Councilwoman Foster mentioned our downtown stores. I am very happy to report that all of my holiday shopping was completed by purchasing items in the stores in our downtown. My grandchildren are particularly pleased with all the gifts they got from, through the Moon Gate. And there were several jewelry items purchased throughout town, writing materials. There's lots to be had if you visit each and every one of our stores. So, big thank you to our downtown retailers and our farmer's market. All right, moving along. We are now ready for our first public participation session. And the total time allotted is 21 minutes. Three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda. If you want to speak in an item that is on our agenda, please feel free to do so at this point. If you want to speak about something that is not on the agenda, I ask that you hold that, those comments or questions till the second public comment session that we will have later on in this meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes have lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds left. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or if, sorry, if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Okay, so if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine button on your phone or keep, and your phone keypad, or select the raise hand icon on this application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading off your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first name, your last name, and your address. Again, if you'd like to speak to a topic that is on the agenda, please press star nine or raise hand button now. Borough Administrator, I'll let you tell me if there are any hands and...
We have, I just wanted, I told, I have gotten a couple comments from members of the public mayor that are requesting to know how many attendees are here because I didn't realize they can't see the numbers. So, I'm going to make an announcement now. We have a total of 24 attendees and five hand raised. And now, I'm going to allow Sonya Hedlund to speak. Please make sure you're unmuted and state your name and address.
Great. Can you all hear me okay?
Sure.
Okay, great, fantastic. This is Sonya Hedlund from 133 Benner Street. Good evening to all of you. I wanted to speak about Agenda Item 14B, the resolution to authorize the Rutgers University Center to conduct this analysis on traffic stops in Highland Park. And I'm a bit concerned and maybe confused about that because we had the DeLacy-Davis analysis that also focused on traffic stops. So, I was wondering if you could clarify, is this for historical data? Is this for data going forward? And I'd also like to understand why the analysis is so limited. I think, you know, one of the things that you guys probably recall hearing from us in public comment and through other petitions, et cetera, is that we really would like to see a comprehensive analysis of data in policing in Highland Park, especially including low-level arrests, pedestrian stops. As we all know, you know, marijuana arrests is one of the number-one ways that mass incarceration has functioned in this country. These are things that we really, it would be great if we could have a sense of what is going on. So, I guess I'm trying to understand why we chose such a limited scope and then, again, a scope that we've already received data on.
Okay, Councilwoman Foster, do you want to address that question?
Yes. Thanks for the question. The report that we, Phase One of this report that we're going to be doing, it's coming through the CAD system. That's where they capture everything that's done in the police department that happens on a traffic stop. So, that system captures everything. This is what Rutgers will have access to. And they will be going through such as the stops, what kind of stops they were, and all that data that was requested before that was captured, that was looked at by DeLacy-Davis. This is the, that you could call that Phase One. But now, we're in Phase Two, where we're going to be actively having this data at our fingertips that we can look at. And at any given point, it will also be a training tool for the police department as well. Because if, say, for example...
30 seconds.
If, for example, you have an officer that is predominantly stopping black and brown people, then you will see that there is a pattern. You can identify the pattern and you can seek to address. If something happens on a traffic stop, it will be an opportunity for them to say, this is what happened in the traffic stop. This will be a learning tool for them to learn.
So, it's to move forward. It's not...
It is going forward. It's going, we're going to be looking at some of the data from 2019 and 2020, but moving forward is going to be a tool that we will be using going forward. So, this is going to be an ongoing tool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Rebecca Cypress, unmuted, Cypress, excuse me. State your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Rebecca Cypress and I'm at 52 Brookdale Court in Highland Park. Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. So, I'm speaking again on behalf of the Middlesex Black Jewish Coalition. First of all, just want to reiterate my invitation to you all and encouragement for you to adopt a resolution in support of Assembly Bill A4656, which would enable municipalities to establish civilian complaint review boards with subpoena power. So, we sent you the text of such a resolution and encourage you to consider it. I also just want to support, on behalf of MBJC, what Sonya Hedlund was just talking about and the sort of need to take a broader view also of police practices in Highland Park. So, some of the items that we would encourage are that Highland Park would engage in comprehensive review, not just of traffic stops. And hopefully, that will, that will happen moving forward. To initiate a sustained program to train officers in racial bias and de-escalation. I see your head nodding. That's great, Councilwoman Foster. Thank you so much. To develop a plan for ongoing systematic review of policing data, to identify any kind of bias, to establish a transparent complaint process, including anonymous options, to create a civilian oversight structure, which I guess A4656 would enable, to implement a commission to make recommendations for creating a bias-free police department and to adopt and implement a bias-free policing policy. And finally, making the clearly itemized police budget available for public review would also be a really fantastic step forward. So, thank you so much again for considering these things.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, I got distracted. Let's see, it looks like Peter Spool is up next. Peter, just state your name and address for us.
Yes, I'm Peter Spool. I live at 146 Green...
Yes, I'm Peter Spool. I live at 146 Graham Street here in Highland Park. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Foster for the comments. And I also want to talk about Item 14B. Several things, you know, the, the resolution is rather sparse. It doesn't say what time period these services are going to be provided for, for that $20,000, for how long. That would be something we would like to know. It would be nice, it would be useful if it included analysis of use of force. I think that's another important thing. And we haven't seen a plan for how the analysis is planned to be used by the Police Department. I think those are all important things. I also might add, in checking out the Rutgers University Center on policing, I don't see anybody that's a statistician on staff. So I wonder how they're going to do a statistical analysis without a statistician. So I'd like answers to the time period and to that last question. How did they do this without a statistician?
At this time, I'm going to ask Chief, could you just pop in now? And we can answer some of these questions together.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. So just to answer some of the questions that I've heard so far, this is to look at our traffic stop data going forward. And it's not going to include the time period that Mr. David, Dr. Davis's report covered. It's going forward and this is as a result of recommendations made following his report that we look at these things going forward. We are picking traffic stop data to begin with because that's the call type that we have the most data recorded for. So going forward, we can figure out what kind of data we have, what kind of data we need, if we need to change our reporting and recording practices appropriately, so we can apply this to other call types. We did choose Rutgers after, you know, trying to find other places that did this. We've been working on this for over a year. As you can imagine, after Minneapolis, the desire for police departments to have this kind of work done exploded and we just, people that we started talking to kind of just dropped off the radar.
30 seconds.
Rutgers came through. They do have statisticians assigned to them that are part of the Center on Policing. I don't know if they are on their website or not, but a couple of them, a couple of them came to a meeting with us along with the Director and, you know, some of the other people that run the Center on Policing. So they do have statisticians. They, I believe they are well-qualified to handle this kind of thing. They've done it for other agencies and they're doing it for other agencies, including ours, going forward. I hope that answers the majority of your questions.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, Peter. Thanks for the question.
And next we have, it's a phone number. The last four digits are 4445. I'm unmuted. You please just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lois Lebing, North Second Avenue. I have no agenda in front of me, so stop me when you must. I'm going to take from what I've heard that Highland Park has not heard of a three-year-old, brand-new New Jersey statue, the sidewalk statue that pertains to free removal of snow and ice, granted only in the residential area, residential sidewalks and driveways and entrances, not rentals, not businesses.
Lois, I'm gonna, snow removal is not on our agenda. So if you can hold that question for the later portion, you're welcome to.
Well, okay, I don't know if I was going to stay that long because this is quite a toll call. But, okay, so this is, this exists, we're going to get snow. I take it you don't have a program set up yet. And then I wanted to ask you to redefine tertiary street because Denison Street has.
Mayor, should I move to the next person? I'm not clear on your wishes.
So I just, Lois, do you have a question that's on the agenda for tonight?
I don't know what your agenda has. I don't have a copy.
All right, well, maybe we can wait till the second public comment.
Yeah, just to make sure. Just come back on the second portion.
Next up, Ravi Duncan. Wait, hold on. Did I? Ravi, sorry about that. I clicked on the wrong name.
No, no. Thank you. Hi, I'm Ravi Duncan. I live on Lawrence Avenue, North Side of Highland Park. I want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Councilman Fine, for your service. I want to point that out. I wanted to wish everyone happy holidays to the council and those listening. And then I also want to build on what some of the others speakers have said regarding the resolution to authorize Rutgers University Center in policing to conduct the analysis. I have two questions. One relates to the point that Peter made around scope of work. What is the scope of work, the timeline and the process? But also it related to that, how is the Highland Park Police Department and other relevant committees or council members going to respond? How is the data actually going to be used? Because while having the data and the data analysis is great, the question is, what is actually going to be done and how is it going to be used? The DeLacy Davis report had multiple recommendations. This is, in fact, one of them. So I applaud and I appreciate the move towards greater transparency. I think that's great. But there were other things on that report's recommendations. It's not clear what's happening with those. And then I guess a second question is, how does this Phase Two fit into what I'm hoping would be Phase Three, Four, Five? What is the long-term goals and strategy around data transparency and use of this data in, in dealing with the kind of problems that we've been seeing around policing in Highland Park?
So Ravi, you're the whole bunch packed into those questions. I'm, I'm going to ask the Chief to address, Chief, you're still here, right?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. I'm going to ask you to address some of the questions. For instance, the DeLacy Davis report's recommendations and besides the stop data, what are some of the things that we have been talking about, looking into or have already implemented?
Right, so the Dr. Davis's report started before my tenure as Chief began and it completed.
30 seconds.
About halfway into my job as Chief. So by the time Dr. Davis's report was presented, he had five recommendations of which we had already completed, not completed those tasks, would put those things into motion before he even came to us with those as recommendations. The following up of police data, of our stop data going forward, is part of what he recommended. The, this data, the first part of it from Rutgers. Mayor, can I continue or?
Please answer the question.
Okay. So going forward, this data is, the first step here with Rutgers is to take the data we have and give us meaningful answers with it and then show us how to use that data to make the Police Department better. It'll drive policy, it'll drive, you know, community engagement, it'll drive community transparency. And with this information, to start at least with the traffic data, then we can take that and apply it to other parts of policing, from arrest data to, you know, community engagement type stuff, to anything else we need to know. I'm excited to finally get this done. This has been a long time coming. It's been about a year of working to get this first phase started and funded. But I'm proud that we can start it and I'm excited to get going because I can't wait to see what this numbers say, so we can start making changes going forward.
Thank you, Chief. Ravi, I know there's a lot more that you had in your question. I would suggest that you reach out directly to the Police Chief for some of those answers. He's, he's been happy to address some of these questions for residents before. Okay, next.
Next up, and Mayor, I'll just mention that we have about five minutes left. And next up is Jessica Hunston.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jessica Hunston. I live at 304 Montgomery Street. I just wanted to go back to the community involvement and community input piece that, that Councilwoman Foster talked about. And I was curious, I know that there's been three meetings of the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council. And I wondered if this proposal of this contract, this resolution had been discussed with the Equity Advisory Council. I know that that was created to provide advice and counsel to you. And I wonder if this had been discussed with them.
Good question, Jessica. The whole process for this came long before the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council and has been in the works for quite some time. But there certainly will be the ability for the Equity Council to advise me after they see and hear the results of this collection of data and next steps. I am really looking forward to working with the group. Once, you know, once, right now, they're still organizing and there's a lot of, lot on our plate. And we'll be doing quite an in-depth look at some of the issues that you're asking about regarding, you and the previous questioners have been asking about regarding this data and many other things that we will be addressing regarding policing and other equity issues throughout town.
Just a follow-up question. Was this discussed with the Equity Commission that preceded the Equity Advisory Council? You mentioned that this had been in the works for a while. I don't know how long it had been in the works and then, or even any other borough commissions.
I'm going to ask Councilman Hale or Councilwoman Foster to answer that question because they were involved with the previous commission.
So my, my recollection of the discussions about this was that the community was, was very adamant that there be an outside entity to monitor ongoing forward the data. And that the, the goal of having that outside entity was one of the things.
30 seconds.
The commission, that the Equity Commission talked about on a, on a regular basis is that there would be an independent source that would review and go over data on an ongoing basis and not as the, the Dr. Davis's report was a, was a one-time snapshot. That the goal was to have ongoing capabilities for monitoring all forms, all forms of data on an ongoing and a regular basis, something that the Police Department has never done. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to keep going if that's okay, Mayor. So, so the discussion was on making sure that there was an outside entity who had the professional capability to provide an independent audit of data on an ongoing basis. And the Rutgers contract is part of that, that, that we had been discussing. My understanding was that it was a priority of the community that there be an, an ongoing independent entity that would be able to provide these reports, which we would provide to the public, which, as the Chief said, would be used for improving and training the department. So.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
Well, I think, I think it does. I mean, the Equity Commission then, I mean, the answer is no to both of the answer to the, both of my questions, I think.
Excuse me?
I don't think so.
I, I, I have to agree with Matt. I don't think so. If it was thoroughly discussed and we have spent almost two years looking at the, the reports, we sat in meetings after meetings, community forums after community forums, we discussed it with everyone on council who is fully aware that where we were going to be moving forward and what we had to do once the DeLacy report was completed, once we had the numbers, once our community came out and said, this is what we're interested in, we took it very seriously. It wasn't a flippant decision. And we went out and then we did tons of research to find the right entity to provide us the resources that we're going to be looking at. So it will be a part of our training tool in the Police Department going forward. So this is not, it's not a one-off. It's a continuation because it's going to be a training tool. So everyone can, in the department, will learn and grow as the data becomes available. And as the Chief said earlier, they are looking forward to using it and it will change over time. They may be looking at different areas as the, as they have this data and it becomes available. They'll have opportunities to look at it and switch it around when the need needs to be switched. Then let it be a part of their training tool.
And, and just.
I, I, so I must say, yes, we, we are very serious about this. This is something that we're putting a lot of time, energy, and money into and to move our PD forward.
Okay, one, one last question.
Just, I want to clarify, I just want to clarify that what I heard Councilman Hale say was that the Equity Commission was involved in, in these discussions about an outside group doing the analysis. Matt, is that what you said?
Yes, we had discussions about having an independent entity outside of the, the Police Department and outside of the borough that would, would set up the systems and help us understand and interpret and, and use the data. So we had those discussions. Maybe part of the confusion is, I, I don't know that we discussed contract language with the Equity Commission and that, that, you know, we, that's, I don't think appropriate in this case. I think that the goal that we heard or believe that we heard was to have an outside entity who would be responsible for data analysis and that it wouldn't be a one-off. And that was our discussions. And that's what I, I believe that this, this does.
Okay, and I do, I do just have one last question, if that's okay, because I did. And that would be, how long does the contract last? How, is it for one year? What is the plan to expand the scope?
So I'm going to ask Jessica that we can get back and answer that in the second portion of the public, because the public discussion, because we've already gone over the time allotted for public discussion at this point. So I will ask the Chief or Councilwoman Foster to address the question in the second part of our public discussion. Okay. We are moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to Table 14D? Oh, move. So Joan, you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 14A through 14C and 14E through 14J?
Don't move.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
All right. May I have a motion to accept Resolution 15A, the resolution in support of Assembly Bill Number 4930 and Senate Bill Number 3013?
Move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman, Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Okay, we're now going to go into our second public participation session. Three minutes per speaker on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not. This section is subject to close by 9:00 PM and we will stick with the three-minute per question. There will be a 30-second warning from the clerk so that we know when the time is running out. What I'd like to do is start with Councilwoman Foster or Police Chief Abrams to answer that second part of Jessica Hunston's question.
The answer to the question is yes. The, the contract will last for a year and it's going to analyze traffic data. It's going to help to, it's going to help the PD to help collect data, fine-tune data, and develop a transparent. collect data, fine tune data and develop a, a transparent method of, and lots of moving forward steps. So it will be for one year and it's going to be a tool that they will have to, to work with. And it's, it's going to be a training tool for them because this is the first time that we've gone out and we have collected. We're going to be actively collecting data from the CAD and stops and what have you and all interaction that the Police Department will be doing. So this will be a project that will be for a year and I'm quite sure that a great learning tool and then they can move forward.
Okay, so if you would, anyone would like to speak and ask a question during this session? Same rules, raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone or select the raise hand button on the Zoom application. Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading your name with the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Borough Administrator, I think Lois had a question.
Uh, she did not, uh, I think she left the call, Mayor. I, I don't see her hand raised nor do I see the phone number. So I do, I'll just make the attendee announcement. We're at 19 and I've got one hand at this point. I'm calling on Jeff Raddaro. Please state your name. We know you're there and where you live.
Hi, you can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, this is Jeff Raddaro. I live on Wayne Street. I, I had a question about the, the data analysis that Rutgers is going to be doing related to the police, which is, is the, are the data that they're going to be looking at just what's publicly available, like the kind of records that I could get through an Oprah request? Or is it going to be like all of the data that the Police Department has as its, at its disposal on these issues?
They're going to be looking at the data that's on the CAD system. So whatever traffic stops and whatever, whatever they, they, the, that is recorded, that's what they're going to be looking at. Chief, would you like to add anything else that they, you think that they'll be looking at?
No, they're going to, they're going to look at all the information we have in our CAD system. Some of it's protected, some of it is not for, from Oprah-type stuff as it can relate directly to driver's personal information. But they're going to take that data and, and not just analyze what we have, but show us if we have a deficiency in the data we're collecting. Maybe we are collecting information we don't need. Maybe we're not collecting some information that would be more helpful to give us a better picture of what the Police Department is doing. So in addition to actually collecting the data and analyzing it, they're going to make sure that we are doing it the best way we can to give us the best information so we can make good decisions going forward. The, the data is going to be everything that we collect now and then that might change going forward. So they're going to look at the last year now. And then if we have to make changes going forward, because we, you know, maybe we need to collect a certain snapshot of each car stop that we haven't done. So the data that we're going to analyze now might be different than the data we analyze in the future, just like when we started this process. We first started talking to Rutgers, we actually changed some of the data collection. We did that Dr. Davis had, we actually added a couple of things because they said it would be helpful to know these things as well. So, um, you know, that, that's going to change as we go forward, as we find things that, that become more useful and paint a, a better picture, a more complete picture of, of our Police Department and how we're doing.
That, that's really helpful. I just, I had a couple minor follow-ups on that. One, one is, I guess, I, I was curious and this is something that we talked about at the last
Thirty seconds.
Mayor's Advisory Commission meeting. And, and I just sort of wanted to preview it for Mr. Schmier. I, I, I'm curious as to how the Rutgers is able to view the non-public data and, and I'm pleased to hear that that's something that can be accomplished through a contract with the Police Department or with the borough. But, and then I, I guess my follow-up question is that since there is some non-public data that's going to be involved, are we still pretty confident the results are going to be shared with the public at the end of the process?
Time.
Okay. So I'm going to let Ed answer that question since it was directed at him and Chief, if you want to fill in after Ed speaks, please feel free.
The answer is yes, that data will be shared as, as indicated with the public. And we are able to share that sensitive material, which we otherwise don't make available for Oprah through our contract relation with Rutgers. We still control that data. And, and they, they are acting as our agent to handle that data. So we're able to provide all the information they need and then that information will be distilled and eventually maybe not the names and individuals, but the data and the, the background information we glean from that will be made available to the public.
Okay, thanks. That's really helpful.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, is there another hand?
Uh, no, Mayor, I don't see any other hands.
Okay, then we're going to move on. This is the point at which I asked the council members if they'd like to take a recess before, before going into the work session. Anybody need to take a recess? And.
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll move right along. Uh, work session items. Just, I don't know, full action can be taken during work session. Mr. Schmier, I'm going to ask you to talk to the special election coming up on January 19th.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the mayor indicated, there will be a special election in the borough, which will take place on January 19th of next year. The purpose of the special election is to fill the final year of the late Councilwoman Sue Wolkovitz's term, which otherwise would expire December 31, 2021. In order to fill that, we have been working with the Middlesex County Clerk's Office and their Election Division. The Clerk's Office in the borough, as required by Title 19, which is the election law, did send out a notification on or about November 18th that we are calling for this special election so that the council can have six members through the end of next year, of the next year, correct. We also put notices, the Clerk's Office put notices in the newspaper and advised the general public that if anyone had an interest in running for that position for the next year, they would follow a procedure whereby they could file a petition and qualify to get on the ballot once the petition signatures were reviewed and certified. We also were required to notify the two local political organizations, the Democratic Club here in Highland Park and also the Republican Club in Highland Park. And we'll invite them to convene and to follow their process under Title 19 to select and recommend a candidate to run for the office under their political banner. The timeframe for doing that was on or about December the 8th. The Democratic Committee did convene and has sent a notice to the county and also to the borough that Councilwoman Tara Canavera was recommended to be on the ballot to continue her service and to fill the last year of the term for the late Sue Wolkovitz. The, so the, the, and no other petitions were received through the Republican organization nor from individuals who were unaffiliated with either organization. In other words, the independents. As a result of that, the there will be a draw under Title 19 held on December 18th to satisfy the requirement to list the petition, well, I'm sorry, the, the order of the candidates on the ballot. And in this case, we have one candidate and so that draw will have to still take place as required by Title 19. But we know that the position will be held by Councilwoman Canavera to continue. As a result of that, the material will be sent over to the Middlesex County Clerk's Office. They will begin to print the ballots, which will be mailed out to all registered residents in the borough on or about December the 28th. So the borough resident should look for the ballot that should be sent out on or about the 28th. And then the election day, which is January the 19th, there'll be instructions with the ballot to complete the ballot and return it by mail, just like we did for the recent general election. There will be at least one live polling place, probably the community center behind Borough Hall. There will be a drop box like there was during the general election at Borough Hall for folks if they want to come by and put the, their ballot in the drop box. They're, they're welcome to do that. And we're also working with the county to address the issue of sharing or discussing who will be responsible for the cost of the general election. County has been most cooperative and we've been working with them and we believe that we'll be able to work that out amicably and the general election should take place on the 19th. After the results are certified, should be recertified on or about the 22nd. Then if the Councilwoman Canavera is elected for the final year of the term, she would be sworn in and she would continue her service on Borough Council. So that is the purpose of the special election on the 19th. And that's kind of a quick summary of what has happened since mid-November through December, I'm sorry, through January 19th. And what we anticipate will happen with the election. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if any residents who are attending this meeting have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to respond to those if they get in touch with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council questions on this? Okay. Next on the agenda is the revale. Terry, you want to talk about that?
Just going to touch on it briefly. We did discuss it at the Finance Committee. Many of you will recall that we took advantage of a county offering to provide tax mapping services, updating and digitizing our tax maps, which we were very eager to do at no cost to us. So that's a great program. And part of that was in anticipation of needing to go through a revaluation, which is basically a reassessment of all the properties in the borough to get their values up to market standard. Because we were put on notice, I'm, I don't have the date in front of me, from the State Board of Taxation, along with several other Middlesex County towns, that our valuations were far, are far enough out of compliance with their standard, which I believe is 75% of, of market value, but I, don't quote me on that. But for example, we are, our ratio is 41.41%. So in anticipation of that, and I guess I wanted to use this opportunity, I don't know why I chose the last meeting of the year to end on such a note. But we are going to be looking at a likely order to revale in the coming year or so. We don't know when for sure. But there have, we, we were put on notice by the state and I wanted to let council know that that's a possibility in the coming year. And it's something we, the tax assessor and the Finance Department are kind of getting organized for when that happens, trying to, trying to figure that out. There'll be a process. But essentially, when you come out of the end of evaluation, the, the assessed value on that card you get every year, is the simplest way I could put it, resembles reality. Which if those of you know, you get the card and you're like, my house is not worth $100,000, you know? That's, that's what we're, what will happen. What ends up happening is while the values of the overall borough goes down and, and what happened, the rate goes down as a result. So the pie stays the same size. If the value goes up, the rate comes down. And so that's, that's kind of, I just wanted to loosely present that fact that it's likely to happen and just also have the opportunity to put that out there to the, the public that's attending and will listen in the future. And there will be a lot more public discussion about that when it happens. We will have to do, do an RFP for a company to do the work on behalf of the borough. So there will be a lot of opportunities and we'll certainly incorporate into a future contract the opportunity to do public meetings to educate people as we go along. But I didn't want, because this has been coming, bubbling up more in my inbox, I wanted to take this opportunity to give the council a chance to be aware of that and ask any questions now that, that I've raised it.
So I, I think, Matt, before I, before I call for questions from you guys, I think it's important to keep in mind that, that I think it's been, Terry, 20 years since our last
I believe, I believe Tom told us it was 1990. So I believe it's been 30 years.
30 years. So, you know, the, the state is coming after municipalities that have not done revales for extended periods of time and 30 years is, is a very long time. It doesn't necessarily mean that every house is going to get a tax increase. That's not what happens with revales, but it does mean that the mix of taxes, you know, what goes into the overall total dollar and who pays what is going to shift a bit. So Matt, your question?
Um, I just wanted to throw out there that, that since it hasn't been done in 30 years, there are homeowners whose houses paid off and, and never had to do this. And that's fine. That's, that's the luck of the draw. But this is, this has a potential to be a major difference for many, many people. That, that there could be some significant changes in your tax bill. And, and I wonder if, and I hope maybe that we can consider as part of the process for maybe hiring the company to do the revale, I, I, I think it might be money well-spent to hire a public information campaign specialist or firm to really provide the public, not just at public meetings, but, but repeatedly again and again, a basic explanation of how this works, why it's required, what could happen. And, and, and really sort of put some effort, some significant effort and perhaps some dollars into a public information campaign explaining all that goes on with a revale. Because my understanding is that it's a, it's a fairly significant endeavor. And, and, you know, when we, we've seen, you know, with, most recently with it, with, with discussions about the water bill, if there's a surprise and, and that, that, that people see, it causes a great deal of anxiety and stress. And I'm, I'm just wondering if because we know it's coming in 2021, because it's
May not be 2021, let me make it clear. I don't know.
Because it's coming, it's coming, right? Because it's coming. That I, 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 I think maybe it's incumbent upon us to, to, to do that extra effort in terms of public information above and beyond what we normally can do with our in-house capabilities. So just an idea.
Okay, I, I think a public missions campaign is a really good idea. I don't, you know, we can talk about how we executed and what's needed to make that happen.
And I would just add one thing to your, I mean, I, I alluded to that in my statement. When I, I kind of put a ping out to my fellow municipal managers when I was, you know, how much does this cost and what, any advice and all that kind of stuff? And communications
Right.
was a big, get out ahead. I mean, 100%, it's, it is. While our assessor feels like he has a good handle on how this may shake out and, and, and is hopeful that it won't be too painful, especially for the single-family home properties, the, the, the reality is there, it is a change. It's invasive. Someone has to inspect your house. I mean, there's a lot that goes into the whole process. So I, I think if we can figure out a way to accomplish that, either through their consultant or other means, I think it's a good idea.
I saw Elsie had her hand up and Phil had his hand up. So let's go Elsie and then Phil.
I just did a little cheat and on Middlesex County, I'm going to send it over. They have a information sheet on the process. So I'll send it over to you. So it's, the work is already done. It might need some tweaking, but a lot of the stuff is already out there. Because we were looking at this a while ago.
Okay.
A while ago, we were looking at, it might be us next. So we had started doing some work. So I can send you over what they've had and they probably just need to get a little tweaking and bring it up to date.
Okay, thanks, Elsie. Phil?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. To follow up what, on what Councilman Hale said and, and also following up on Councilwoman Foster's comment. The, the appraisal companies that actually do the appraisal companies that actually do the second phase, which is the actual appraisals and the information. In my experience with the last two that our firm handled, part of their submission, because they have to go out to bid under an RFP process. And part of the submissions of all of the appraisers was a public information piece, including designated hours to meet with individual homeowners and reevaluation and reassessment as people would ask to do that. So I think the companies, as Borough Administrator Javier said, these days, the companies are aware that they have that public responsibility. And and we'll make sure when we get to that process, whether it's twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, that that's included. And not only do they put the information out, but they supply us with updates and keep us moving forward with the public information piece. It's that, it's very, very important that people understand this process that could be a little complicated.
I I think also, I think that's great. But I I also think what Matt was suggesting, and I I think it's a good idea, is to start, start the communication process before we we even have the bids out, just so it starts sinking into people and questions could be asked that we could then specifically have addressed by the professionals. So yeah, it's a big one. Okay, anything else on the revale?
Tara's got her arm up. And she's muted.
My question is, um, a few residents have reached about how their property is considered two lots, so they're paying a lot more in taxes. But there's not enough room on the property to build another house. So I was wondering, would this in effect help them with what they're paying in taxes? Like, could somebody's taxes become lower, I guess is what I'm asking.
I guess the best way to put it, there will likely be no change, people for whom see no change in their bill, people for whom their bill may go up and people or property owners, I should say, I shouldn't, you know, maybe commercial properties as well. And and then some will go down. That, you're asking a question that's over my skill level to answer. But that sounds like something that doesn't have to wait for a revale. They should be reaching out to our assessor. And I'm happy to connect them. If you want to forward me an email and I can, I can, they may already have done so, but you know, it it certainly wouldn't hurt to
I don't think they have, but I will have them reach out to you.
I, that's, that's, I mean, because there, he does troubleshoot and address things in an ongoing way. I should have said at the beginning, one of the reasons the revale is necessary at this time is because it's been so long and the records haven't been systematically updated regularly. Once you do a revale, our assessor is confident, once we have established this accurate baseline, moving forward, he can, or whoever the future assessor is, can maintain a a pretty good baseline that you don't have to do this overhaul. You can do it as as properties are sold, you catch things as the co, as permits are issued, et cetera. But just too much time and too much water under the bridge has gone on since we've had eyes in a lot of the the properties. And we're at this point. So I wouldn't, I would encourage your person to reach out. And I would also encourage anybody who's listening, if they have a unique or what they perceive might be a unique situation regarding their value, to please contact the assessor's office or me and I'll put them in touch.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have anything they want to report on their goals? All right. May I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters?
I'll move. Second.
Roll call, please. Joan?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, Terry, I'm going to ask you to ensure that only the panelists are in on this.
Yeah, I'll ask members of the public to please leave the meeting. And I will also remove them if they don't go. So just give me a moment. Let people filter out. Give me one more moment.
Look, look who's last.
Yeah, but hold on, I'm not, we are not.
Let me see who's in there.
Hold on, I'm having a technical brain.
Matt Hirsch.
Yeah. Give me one second. We are not locked. I'm trying to remember how to do it. I'm I'm failing. Why can't I see anything? Excuse me one moment, everybody. Come on, participants. Just hold on, everybody, I'm sorry. There we go, I'm in the wrong. And then I need to promote him to a panelist. Sorry, this is a year-end mental failures. All right. It looks like we have Matt Hirsch as a panelist, which allows me now to lock the webinar.
Like a
Hey! Sorry about that. In my head, I was gonna work. So, Council
I thought we had another week without him.
I've already started calling you Hale and him Hirsch.
Mayor?
So
The chief is still on.
Can go, right?
Oh, yeah, you can leave, chief. Sorry about that.
Okay, I didn't know if you needed me for this.
I don't think I've locked you in. I'm just locking you out.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye, be safe.